We're spoken. Spoiler.
David. Okay, we got being six block, we'll call the meeting to order, first order of business is the question.
We didn't see the buyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the states one nation under God in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, right, yeah, you have to keep the talking to a minimum, and exactly, keep your cell phones off or on silent or nice. Okay, I will dive right into the public theories on application for on premises license for that.
The board has been forwarded a copy of the standard application from Babylon, this is a new application for the Madhouse Grill located at three forty seven Wannabe Road. The application is being made of corporate entity. We have a place representing. And they have required of you to receive the application in advance.
Board have any specific questions or concerns?
And I apologize for having a brief, but here's the hours, where are the hours gonna be? Yeah. You are gonna be until two in the morning?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, thank you breakfast.
Okay. Some boozy brunches.
Now, anything else? Anybody as far as the public have anything you want to add on that? Seeing none. We will close the hearing. All right, and go right into review and approve the minutes of November fifteen.
So long.
Seven motion.
Second.
And a second. To approve. Can we put it second? Seeing none, all those favor. Second, please. Members reports, we'll start with this.
Um, just that, I think it's called the dirty, like, what's their roads, like, we're missing this, the playground, and I just was looking forward to go pick your dog up from Doggy daycare, and I noticed that like one of our town roads, we didn't have that.
So missing a sign on our, on in town end?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's right, like, right where your Nigger's Zoo building is, like, that road, like, there's no roadside there, so.
Well, some of these. Ron, Ogan, Kelsey?
Uh, I want to thank the people who are involved in today's events. Um, very nice to see everyone like attentive and all that, and appreciate everyone's professionalism and taking care of that in a timely manner. I did have some questions, but I think that would go better during other business. And then I attended the sewer commissioner meeting and just wanted to commend them for, for hearing out a concerned community member and kind of going back and reconsidering the ordinance they were trying to change, I think it was an ordinance, um, and kind of find a happy medium for everyone.
Thank you, and I don't have anything, so we'll dive right into the members report.
Okay. Uh, last week I attended the Maine New Hampshire Joint Exchange for managers, it was informative, it was a lot about, you know, HR type stuff, uh, employee retention, workforce trends, uh, and other items. I also attended the first meeting last Friday of the, let's just call it America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday commission, uh, that the governors assembled. And so I've been appointed, uh, to that seat, which represents all municipalities. I think it'll give us a unique perspective and opportunity, given that, um, the Arnold expedition came right through towns, and they're talking about, you know, how are we going to focus on things like that historically, so, it could be interesting to see how that kind of plays out, it's a minimal, um, requirement for me to show up and help with them, but they're also going to, um, probably cover mileage expense and things like that, so, uh, that could be helpful for the town in a couple of different ways. Uh, continue to think about time report dedication in spirit of America, I have not got anything, so then I'm gonna start coming up with names, and then that's what you're gonna have. Well, uh, please get me those names as soon as you can, I would be appreciative. You can now request absentee ballots for town meetings, so we're ninety days away. Um, you've got town meeting and the presidential primary, those are back to back elections, um, so you can request them, but you won't get your ballot until early February. Uh, there's a welcome package, it's been included with your binder today that you can review, um, it's, it's final draft here, um, there are still a couple tweaks in the versions you have on your desk, um, that we're gonna be able to update in house. Uh, and then ideally, I'm gonna get a small batch each year after county meeting professionally printed, so they can distribute them to new residents, um, and to folks that maybe aren't new, but just don't know too much about the community. And I'm probably going to approach TIF in terms of, um, getting that funded annually, it seems like a nominal expense, but uh, I have sought out pricing on that, I've also sought out pricing on town reports and newsletter printing and things like that, just because our traditional printed for the town report, uh, it, it's significantly higher than it was last year, so, um, that's all the working in the background, the nomination papers are available for all the offices that are posted and due back by January third, close of business. The planning board of the week next Thursday, six o'clock, the only thing I believe that's gonna be on their agenda is finalizing their budget for twenty twenty four. Uh, work on the trail maintenance building has began as they, as the contractor committed. I also authorized an early check that she'll sign off on tonight, uh, to take care of a down payment on the electrical work as well as the clock, the material for being the trusses. Um, so that's, you know, moving along, obviously, this knows a little bit of a setback, but they're still getting the project, um, up and running. The last round of reimbursement, the APV grant program was filed, and we should be recouping those expenses, uh, for the town in whole, including my time, which, you know, a salary, it's nice when you can get something back for it, they're gonna reimburse ninety percent of that as well, so TIF committees, they're not gonna meet this month because we don't have anything really pressing on the table, so that will be a January meeting. Your financing collections update, twenty twenty one real estate taxes, if you haven't paid, you're getting the foreclosure here, you'll receive that notice shortly after Christmas. Uh, eh, and that's not real fun, so anyway, the date on that, there's twenty two accounts right now, foreclosure dates February fourth. The next round of sewer closures will happen on December sixteenth, we still have two accounts in that status. And then we're gonna file liens on December twenty first, which is really low impact, I've already received the, the naughty notice. Uh, sixteen accounts are looking at sewer liens for October, November, December twenty twenty two sewer use charges. Uh, we were approached by Sherry Lewis at Franklin Savings about moving some money over there, um, and given their community involvement, heavy community involvement, uh, in the last couple of years, I felt obligated to explore it, so I was able to negotiate a five-five rate on a six month CD. Uh, so that's very good use of our money for that period of time, and then, you know, probably we'll just end up leaving that with them, um, as long as, as long as community relations remain as positive as they are. Uh, Peter ran the math on that, so the increase from regular accounts, uh, to where we are in that CD will get an additional thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars over the next six months. It's above and beyond what we were gonna get before. Scowegen Savings candidly, as a result of writing a million dollars out of their account, came back, uh, and wanted to be more competitive, they increased the rate across all of our regular accounts from two point five to three point five, so money that's just sitting in a checking, it's earning three point five percent for us now. We have three million in CDs at, uh, Scowgen Savings Bank right now, the next one that's up, uh, is at four percent, so it could be better, and that's gonna mature at the end of December, and we'll look to reinvest that as well, so uh, that money, we'll see later in budget session, is, is working, uh, to offset increases that we're seeing. The holiday stroll and tree lighting light attractor parade is this Saturday, the tractor parade begins at four. Uh, down onto public safety, uh, reiterating what Kelsey said, just thank you to all of the responding agencies that came to town today. Uh, rapid response and made great work of it, all things considered, uh, we could be faced with that tonight, and we are not, so especially Sheriff Lancaster and his department, the state police forest service was in the air, partner agencies in the hopes that, uh, the fire department, Todd, Andrew, uh, they were there all day, um, it's kind of base camp for them, it didn't get used as much as we thought, but nonetheless, they, the agencies were able to come in at the end of the day, deep roof, um, and we were able to go into the room with them and thank them for what they've done, so, um, you know, not bad on the whole, um, it's unfortunate that we've become probably too seasoned, um, in the routine of today, so, um. And then the last thing is the FEMA claim, that is the main rainstorm that took out our floating dock and, and all the fun stuff like that. I've completed all of that, now I'm just waiting to fund an obligation from the federal government, which should be done within two to three weeks, and then we'll see the money come back on that. And then there is a separate project for the floating docks because, um, we have to file that from insurance firm, whatever the insurance company does not cause FEMA gap fund that at ninety percent, and the state will cover five percent of that, so we'll only have five percent of the deductible or any uncovered expense, uh, out of that, so uh, that's good news there, we should be on, on the five percent hole after that storm.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, right, uh, discussion on December ninth, general warrant.
I move that we approved general warrant number twenty one. The amount of oh, uh, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, seventeen hundred and twenty nine dollars and eighty four cents. I've had to do several page books.
So you have a welcome to the second, any discussion?
What is the one million for Franklin?
So we wrote a check.
Okay.
And we wrote it off. Anything that appears at the top?
Some might feel a little less.
Anything that appears at the top of your warrant that's out of alphabet, or something that we've popped in between your last meeting and today? Uh, White Cat LP for Summer Rose. Oh, yeah, it works. If you didn't recognize the name, that's all, it's like, I'm gonna run that press. And that's the whole pack. Okay. Oh, okay.
Five hundred for Margaret O'Connell.
So planning board stipend, she will provide us with, uh, general information, so we issue it towards a subcontractor.
And then what fence do we have? I'm guessing this is the fence.
Uh, they, we bought the post, they wanted their black, was a post that are down to the back of Emery Square.
Okay.
With the, the swamp change. We had to have that for the drop off.
I'm guessing that the sixty five thousand for their burger bank clothing is the fire department stuff.
That's correct.
And we are getting, that's our grand money, okay.
Got the final payment.
Okay.
So I now have everything I need, thanks to Peter, this is for a hundred and ninety five thousand federal. Uh, you didn't, uh, seeing no more discussion, all those favor. So everybody. Uh, public comment? Like, uh, seeing nothing, I would actually no, right, just a second here, uh, right, uh, discussion action on application for on premise license for the Madhouse Grill.
We need for a motion to approve. I move that we approve, um, the application for on premise license for Madhouse Grill at three forty seven Wannabe Road.
In motion.
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, everybody in favor? Yeah, uh, and then I would ask the board here if we can, uh, move other business up to whatever number, number ten minutes. So I would even more good to move, uh, other business up.
So moved.
Second motion, second, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, all those favor, it's everybody. Right now, we'll have Richard fill you in on the other business, please.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Uh, member of the board would have taken a vote to add application for on premise license for six pin jug, six Main Street.
So moved.
Motion, a second, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody.
I we're certain. I guess it's a different.
Uh, so the ownership of the establishment is transitioning. And so Amanda Clark is purchasing that, and so she has to get this shifted over. So we did not hold a public hearing because it's not new, and we had no reviews two months ago.
Okay.
Uh, so she got this to me a little late, that's why it's under other business. Do the board have any questions?
That was the only one.
Was something, no, the other one?
Yeah, the other one becomes another one, and then they're, they're in the action.
Is that just one?
So we're just a motion to sign.
So moved.
Yeah, thank you. Motion, a second, uh, any further discussions, seeing none, all those in favor, and that's everybody.
For those who submitted applications tonight, I will get those for you back to pop, and put them into our files, you can pick them up tomorrow, uh, anytime after eight thirty, we're here until six tomorrow. And that should take care of what you need to think, if you want to leave or you want to hang around, let's do.
Uh, okay, jumping back in here, uh, right, number ten, uh, special action on confirmation of appointment, uh, part apartment administrator.
Am I gonna get a chance to my other business?
Yes.
Don't get emotive. Or should I do it now?
Yeah.
Um, okay, again, super grateful for how things were handled today. Question though about how we communicate that people should stay in their houses. Um, from a personal perspective, home alone, headed to work around nine, drove right through Airport Road. Kind of like, what are all these people doing? I had no idea what was going on, and didn't find out that it was suggested that I stay in my house till I read an article online, and I just feel like maybe that's something, I don't know who it was supposed to come from, but that like, should have come from an official source. Um, so I don't know, like, what our practices with that, or if we want to revisit that, I just had a question about that, slightly concerned.
Well, it's a valid question for sure, and I, I don't know, so I, I certainly don't have the means to answer that for you, uh. I, right, I mean, was there an actual stay in your home warning issue?
No, the only reason I knew the thing happened was like, I got someone from school saying that there were like, kind of a lockout thing, and then I had to like, I was like, what's going on, like, and then I had guys who do business up here that work for me, and they're like, uh, there are people, and I was like, I don't know, so, yeah, I mean, it was like, I was completely out of loop, I knew something was going on, but I had no idea what.
I candidly defer, and the town didn't issue any comment, of course, today, today, with the exception of waste management, uh, we felt that that's coming from long postman. And it was, we were open this morning, we were gonna just kind of go through the day, uh, and when the sheriff came, he said, you know, we recommend that that's what you do, all major employers, um, in town are under lockdown. So that kind of where we went, and that was all announced and asking us that for the recommendation. Uh, we didn't broadcast a poster or anything like that. Which it's a difficult fine line, while the agency is involved.
Yeah.
And creative command.
Yeah, there's no emergency response, it's town specific, I don't think, is that like?
That's what stuff is.
Yeah.
Well, does it make sense to like have one then in the future?
Norridge Walk, Town Watch, whatever.
It's a tough one, right, with this, as to where it is.
You can't, you can't force anybody to stay.
Agreed, but how do we communicate that stuff is going down, and you might want to avoid that area, A, so that you can do your job, and B, so that we're not sending people out there, I could have woods back there, could have been walking with my dogs, you apparently had dogs out there. Just feel like that's something that needed to be communicated, and I'm not trying to place blame, but it sounds like we're skirting around it right now, so that's why I'm feeling like it's important. Because I, I feel like it is something we need to address, you know?
Well, yeah, yeah, you're, you're right, I just, I don't know who per se would be the issuing, I mean, or I ultimately, who, who ran this out here, was it the state police, was it?
Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office. On my end, I can bring it to my administration.
Yeah.
The suggestion, or the concerns from the board, just say, is this something we can take a look at, maybe do something different in the future, or what can we do?
Yeah, and so like.
Because ultimately, it would probably come from the sheriff to say here's what we're gonna do, everyone is so different, that you, you can't blanket statement, and you can't force people to stay at home, but as far as a heads up, maybe we come up with a plan where it's a media blast, or something.
Yeah.
That's issued by the sheriff or something for that. Um, I can say, I know the sheriff was not sitting in his office today, he was actually helping us, because it was so manpower needed.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but I would definitely bring it to their attention to say, hey, we had some concern from residents of Norridge Walk of what can we do to do better in the future, and he's always good about, um, these types of after action reviews, to say, what did we do well, what did we do maybe not so well, what can we do better in the future?
Yeah.
I'll bring it to their attention.
And that was like a follow up I had, it was like, it sounds like a debrief did take place, but is there ever like a debrief like with townspeople? Like a, like a town manager or something, just it's like, like, how'd that affect you, and?
Not normally.
Okay. Just.
Yeah, not, not on a normal basis, because of what's discussed in those, in those after actions.
Okay, yeah, if you could do that, and I don't know if it's something I can understand, like, the nervousness around it, but if we can be supportive in their efforts, knowing you, you, your main goal is really to like fix the problem, and if we can be helpful in communicating in a way that's appropriate, I don't know if like, we need the green light from the sheriff's office, like, go ahead and post or something like that, but I just think in the future, so that.
Just a general broadcast, I don't think, and I'm not, I don't want to speak for the sheriff, um, but just a general broadcast, if the town's aware of something taking place in town, and they wanted to put something, hey, just a heads up, uh, major police presence in town uh, for an ongoing situation, something like that, I don't think would offend the sheriff, um, but I don't want to speak for him.
Yeah, no, totally. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the full extent of the reach is for, you know, the text messages, the notifications that I get through, like, the school district, but I mean, however that platform is set up, I think that reaches like a lot of people, so I mean, if there is something, if they're knowing enough to do the lock in, whatever it was, like, you know, there's maybe the opportunity for more expansive information in that, like, initial communication that goes.
The school put out the message that.
Yeah.
On location.
Yep, and like, then we had a second one that said that, you know, pickup times could be delayed because of that, so, you know, we're getting some information, it was enough for me to kind of try to figure out something else going on, but I mean, like, that got to me, and it gets to, you know, I don't, I don't know what the actual number reach is, but, um, it seems like that type of, it's like one message goes out, and I'm guessing it's one person that sends it, and it goes to a, everyone's.
Yeah, so the school one is, it's set up through the school, um, again, listen, I can talk to the sheriff about, there is, there used to be a program, that's kind of a nationwide program, where there is a mass type thing that goes out when I was the community resource officer of Scoween, and it was available, um, that's something we can look into, but ultimately, it's his decision, and the administration's decision whether they want to implement something like that. Whereas you would, the one back in the day would be, you would subscribe as a resident, that you want to be part of anything that comes out, uh, and then when they do a target specific blast.
Yeah.
For Norridge Walk, you can get it, it wouldn't go to every phone, and just if you would already subscribe to that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would not be inundated that.
Um, and I, like I said, that's been, that's been years since I've done that, but that's.
Yeah, and I'm more, I'm more grateful for all the work that everyone did, that I am concerned with what happened, but I am concerned with the communication.
Just what can we do better?
Yeah.
Make it.
But I, I am very grateful for all the work that everyone did to communicate what they could and keep people safe. Just, I feel like, I feel like I could have done something that went out to local people.
Well, right, and you're, you're right there, too, you're, it's in the direct, I hope you're a half a mile as the bird flies, uh, so no, I, oh, great questions, really, I I'm curious to myself, that's what they would say, I, right, and from start to finish, how long did this even?
Oh, gosh, I'm gonna guess, I didn't look at the log, we're down six hours.
Really, full time?
Yeah, let me spread the question as well, roughly around six, I'm, if I had to, just guesstimate.
Yeah. Here's the board interest in singing press poker municipally based alerts.
I mean, I feel like it's gonna be too expensive, but sure, I'd see what it looks like.
I thought it was kind of predatory today, but I got a new one.
That is a little pressure.
It's a scam.
Texts and things like that.
I'd be curious, but.
Honestly, yeah, I mean.
I can pull up right from the next meeting.
I feel like even if there's something, like, I.
Like, if there's an accident that's gonna cause like issues with travel, I mean, like, I think it's maybe we could use, whether it's.
Yeah, or like, I don't know if we ever, I know like schools often do like the red line at the top of the webpages, like I, I saw it on the news article, and then you know, not to always trust what you read there, so I was like, all right, let me find out more, I went to sheriff's website, you know, and I should have just called you, but I figured they're all busy trying to take care of it, and I was like, looking for that word name, I was like.
I mean, in all honesty, that's what it was, my day was supposed to be decent, I was prepared for tonight, and I didn't get to review your warrant before it all for us.
Yeah.
I don't have many minutes, I'm strapped.
You did a great job.
But everybody's day blew up.
Yeah.
So the sheriff had his day set up, too. There wasn't a spare moment, I had an apple for dinner in my office.
You want some of my banana?
No.
Okay. Anyway.
I'd be interested to see what the offer.
Please, so appreciate everything that Robby said. But if the town is serious about it, it really should be considered to be municipal based, or EMA level at the county, because today's incident was a water force incident, tomorrow's might not be.
Right.
Yeah. And the sheriff's gonna go. Not, but just like Richard's being very respectful, now you get in the middle of the sheriff's business, the sheriff's not gonna want to get in the middle of fire business or whatever, so it, it either should be EMA level of the county to handle all emergency, or it should be municipal. Right.
Yeah, I, I just think it's something that, like, if we had it, we would probably utilize it more than we would think, I mean, something, you know, like, you know, the house that caught fire, if there is a road that you cannot travel on, you know, that's something that can be put out due to a fire, there's gonna be an increase like that, you know, find an alternate route, or if there's like an accident or something like that, or if like we're closed because of, you know, something, but I mean, like, things that happen in spur of the moment, whether it's an accident, uh, detours, things like that, just so people can plan around that, especially in the winter time. Um, you know, I don't, I think that if we had it, we'd find all sorts of ways to use it, but like, if we don't have it, so we don't even think about the possibilities for things like that.
Good, I mean, we, we have rescue plan money left. And so that's something we could consider on a trial run basis, let's try it for a year and see what participation is, what types of messages would go out. We can test one, but let's get a price first, and we can agenda that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting, yeah, thank you. Uh, anything else for the board on our other business?
Okay, uh, moving forward, uh, number ten, even, uh, discussion action on confirmation of appointments for the fire department administrators and fire chief. So, uh, with the departure of our last fire chief um, at the end of our call, where I sat down with remaining two officers plus retired chief and discussed, you know, what are our opportunities, what did we miss, how could we be better? What are the personalities that fit into the roles, what's gonna be best for the Norwood Fire Department and in turn for the tax payers? And so that really turns into something that lasts more than twelve months. And how do we do that, so we made the decision to advertise for our fire department administrator, which was very close to the job description that we had issued for the chief last year. Uh, with some things removed natural, so they, and then the goal would be to have them work, say, two full days, sixteen, twenty, twenty-four hours a week. Uh, in terms of keeping us in compliance for safety, stat lower site, policy, things like that. And depending upon who the candidate was, they could be eligible to be an officer, even the chief. But don't make them one in the same, like we had before. So we advertised for that position, we got six or seven applications, I would say. Um, we had, um, we met with a couple of candidates, and there was one that really stood out above the rest. And so that's Daryl Wyman, who is an active yet inactive member of our current call force, he is a full time firefighter, working the two on and twenty-four off, it's pretty generous, he works two days and eight on average in Scowegen. Uh, he comes with, you know, stellar recommendations, and he's got that background, he's captain up there now. And so he's got a leadership background, he's got training, education background, um, and so I would like to extend him the off, well, I had extended him the offer, a salary of thirty three thousand dollars, all inclusive of his roles administrator, all trainings and meetings outside of normal hours, as well as all calls. So we're not gonna track him as a call firefighter anymore, that's it, that's it. And then the management of that position then would be on the fire chief. In terms of, are you showing up to halls and things like that, not Daryl's position, position specifically. Um, and so continuing, because that's one thing, I would like you to confirm my appointment of fire department administrator, the second piece is fire chief. And after a lot of deliberation, thought, uh, and consideration for what's best for the department and the town, the interim fire chief Todd Pinyo has agreed to accept the full fire chief position. Todd has asked us for one thousand dollar stipend salary, if you will, I don't think that's unreasonable, I know what Todd puts in now without having that role title. Um, and the other component of that is I believe that the board and the town owe the fire chief the option of health insurance benefits, we always have. And candidly, if they get removed, they will not go back in, and then that puts us at a severe disadvantage, um, to recruiting and retaining a fire chief. Uh, those dovetail, and you look at the total number, um, this is more costly than having the full time in this department. We're gonna save seven thousand dollars, um, over on the other side with code benefits, the other half of the benefits here. Uh, Todd's agreement with us, uh, in terms of one thousand dollars a month, that would be an all inclusive, so we're not gonna be paying Todd above and beyond for calls and whatnot, meetings, which we currently do, um, so it's not break even. It's not, it's gonna cost us a little bit of extra money. Um, but again, I think that with everything that we've discussed, it's what's right for the department, and and so that's my recommendation, so my recommendation is to confirm the appointment of fire department administrators, Daryl Wyman, fire chief was Todd Pinyo, um, and then in a separate motion would be to approve the fire chiefs. Um, and then in a separate motion would be to approve the fire chief's wage, which is the sole responsibility at this point.
What was the wage before this?
We were paying the five hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars a year, plus benefits.
So what is the difference between for that specific position that we're paying now for with this versus before?
So we were paying thirty-four thousand five hundred, it being this half, the fire department's half of that salary. Um, and then we were paying the health insurance, which is still gonna stay in play. Um, the benefits, the phone and the car for that previous chief. Uh, we're realizing that your, the net net is just in this raw number is about fifteen grand extra. But you've got four, five, six thousand in Todd. Where Todd was making, say, six thousand last year, where he was getting the stipend, he's getting his call and whatnot. And now that's gonna be all inclusive in his salary. Those are the unknowns. So the job of Todd not showing up to calls, being on a salary is my responsibility and the job, if the administrator doesn't show up, would then be Todd's responsibility. It becomes a performance issue if they're just taking the salary and they're not showing up because they don't get paid for.
Nine thousand dollar. Difference then, so if we take that out, if it was fifteen, okay.
And so those are the unknowns, and then you're gonna get Daryl's in the trouble of calls, but you're not really seeing him anymore because he's all obligated.
And with Daryl, it's no one transferred to her because he's getting from Scoween again, or.
Right, so we didn't offer that because of the part-time position, we customarily don't. What I have agreed to with him was to offer him the rate contribution for main purse. And he can set that up as a separate account, which is a separate benefit from his Scoween drop, they can't be combined. Or we'll just put it into a traditional four fifty salary retirement account with other employees, but. That was a high value item for him.
Do we normally do that for part-time employees?
Uh. No. We do for. We did for fire chief, the previous fire chief.
I just wanna say I'm very excited that you're willing to be our full-time fire chief. I don't think I understand this though, or I don't like it, either way. Um, so like, say. We do this as is, and then. These two people decide to leave, how are we then recruiting for those positions? We're gonna ask someone to come be fire chief for a thousand dollars a month, like is that normal?
So this is the restructuring is not the fire chief being here all the time, the restructuring is the fire chief has a full-time job, all locations to travel. Current, but you know, in the past, that's what we had before this last year, right? So they have outside all locations, but they possess strong leadership skills, experience in fire service and whatnot. And candidly. Hopefully, Chief Pino, uh. Will keep that leadership, will maintain a relationship with the board, will maintain a relationship with the department, but from a distance, he's not gonna have to be obligated to pay for. Not just twenty, twenty-four hours a week, right? And that's the other thing. So we're getting, right now we're getting twenty hours a week, what we were, right? The previous chief, twenty hours a week was. Delegated to the department. This is gonna give you that sixteen to twenty hours a week, plus plus. Plus plus. And all of that. It's really difficult to nail it down, but Todd wants to go back to. A semi Dave, Dave Jones style. Chief position where he's chief, he's command, and he makes those fundamental decisions for the department, but. He's not gonna be into that administrative work day in and day out. No, he's still gonna have his fingers in the budget, he's still gonna have his fingers in capital plan. Uh, you know, we just had a call yesterday. Um, to navigate through all of that, but a more traditional. High-level chief as opposed to pushing paper on there.
Do other towns have setups like this, or other fire departments have setups like this?
Scott, cuz we're. We're not, we're not a giant department like Scoween or Waterville, but we're full-time, where we have two full-time firemen who. Have to have someone, right, telling them what they need to do throughout that work week. So you've got them monitoring that and then. The compliance piece, which we just, if you think back to what we just got pinged on by our state's. A lot of the stuff that was missing was paperwork, uh, and the person who had done that for, for the fire department had retired. And no one filled that gap and it was missed. Uh, so the administrative piece takes care of that, it doesn't leave it for Todd to do as a. Volunteer working a full-time job somewhere else. Uh, so for me, it adds some accountability, so you know. When the paperwork knocks down, it's the administrator, right? Uh, that should have been on top of the stuff. And then you still have the toddler food pain, but this is Todd as chief to where. He's ultimately responsible to make sure that everything is being done.
Accepting the liability and. Of the agency.
Yes, we would struggle to build this position if Todd was not so generous, but with his uh, financial means and time, uh. Yes, I, I don't, we, without him, I don't feel that we would be able to build that position for the thousand dollars a month. I, I think that's very kind of you to do that at that price. Uh, I know it's not about the money either. Uh, so this structure works with the two candidates that we have with Todd being chief. And Daryl filling, I think the administrator piece would be a little easier to fill uh than the chief spot. If you will, so I, I think we're uh fortunate. I, I mean, I would, I know he would be against it, but I, I would go back to paying for the calls they come to, that's kind of above and beyond, you're already sacrificing. Quite a bit to be the chief's position and make yourself available for all that. Uh, and traditionally, the chief has always been paid for his uh time. On, on top of that.
But not at twelve thousand.
Right, not at, not at twelve.
That's why I picked that number. So let me give you some feedback on the accountability. So if you have a member. Who's. Let's say his name's Matt, just say. If Matt comes to the call in the middle of the night, great. If Matt come, doesn't come to the call in the middle of the night. There's no. You don't get quizzed on it, you don't get measured on it, you don't get, you're paid dock for it, you don't get, there's no negative repercussions. For person, it's, it's not a volunteer fire department. It is a paid call force department largely with two full timers. But it is volunteer show up. You don't show up, there's no penalty. So the thought of moving the, the two administrative roles to salary was. Now I have some responsibility, I have to show up. If I don't show up, I can be held accountable for that. You keep, it, and it's cheap, you probably could anyway, but your administrator, oh, you're, you're paid for, oh, he's becoming calls. No, that's not the deal. The deal was, here's the deal. We agreed on, you would come to this, okay. And so you can have a little bit of. Discussion. With your employee coaching session, uh, feedback session, re- employee review, and it can be about your attendance. Now, you really can't. So that's the idea. So. Have I ever made twelve thousand for the department? No. I'm not gonna put in probably any more work than I already do. So you can say I'm generous and, you know, thank you for the comment, but. I think twelve was the right number. And you'll still get me every time I'm available. Um. And so that, that was kind of. One of my conditions, and I was actually considering back a year ago, it was Jim Lyman, if you remember, was the board representative on the higher rank committee. For the fire chief a year plus ago. And he said, Todd, can we just pay you something and you be chief and, and we'll hire somebody to do the paperwork? And we kind of quickly dismissed it, maybe too quickly, I don't know. Um, so it's not a new idea. But it's, it's splitting it out. So you asked about down the road. Down the road. Um, maybe I don't wanna do it anymore and, and Daryl is at or nearing. Uh, retirement from Scoween, maybe this is a great place to retire, right? Perhaps. Right? Uh, maybe Daryl's all done, but I'm, I get retired from my full-time job. May- maybe it gets wielded together someday, who knows, down the road, but you have a lot of options. And for people like to, to fill, say that Daryl didn't wanna do it anymore. Um, there's other Darrells out there, right, that are working two days out of eight, that, and they all have second, you know, second jobs. So there's, there's other. Uh, people. That can fill that. And candidly, who are you gonna get for twelve thousand for chief if it wasn't me? It's probably an internal candidate, right, and the person already really attached to the department. There's always gonna be that, so. It felt like a really good compromise and a great way to fix the current problem. It may not be forever. Um. But. That was, that was the agreement, that was the. That was what we settled on. If, uh, if you guys are in agreement, I think it works.
So we all told Jim like, you are right, we should have listened.
So we, we quickly dismissed that, I never made it back to the board, maybe he mentioned something, but it never, it never went anywhere.
So just, Daryl, Daryl's a great candidate, I've known Daryl a long time, uh, it's great, everybody does. Just all good though, so. Todd will answer to you, Daryl will answer to Todd.
That's correct, but Todd answers to you in terms of compensation.
Correct, but just as far as Todd's holding Daryl accountable for his. Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, but it's not like the chief job, the way we have it structured is devoid of paperwork, it's not bad. Right, um, but I'll take the high level stuff. But it's not there. The personnel stuff, employee stuff, the budget stuff, capital planning. And a lot of directing. And, you know, and all the responsibility, of course, that goes with the position, and you have, you have employee, don't get put in there. Play from the line, so that, that's. You know, twelve thousand, twelve million isn't enough for that, right? So, um. That, that's the division of responsibility as we see it.
Yeah, the administrators kind of just executed each high-level plan, right, let's make the plan day.
Set the direction.
Yeah.
Chart the course.
Good, everybody comfortable with this? Thank you, Todd. So I take a motion, uh. To confirm, confirm Daryl Weyman is department administrator effective January first. Uh, so the motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everyone.
So we need a motion to appoint Todd as.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-fourth. Sure.
So.
Motion I second, second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody. Yeah, perfect, thank you. A motion to send the chief's pay. Oh, okay.
The chief's pay at twelve thousand dollars a year starting January first.
Get the motion in a second, uh, any further discussion on that?
I don't love it, I just wanna go on the record, not because I, if the department thinks it's what's best for the department, I'm in, but. I feel bad that we're taking advantage of your generosity and I wish we could pay more.
I wish I had more time to give, but I have.
You would say that.
Okay, uh, right, all those in favor? Okay, that's everyone, thank you. Oh, yeah, okay, so I'm close and. Uh, discussion action on tip committee recommendations.
Oh, I'm gonna, you see, oh, yeah, okay, the tip committee met last week. Uh, and reviewed for the second time really, uh, proposing for a kayak rental storage unit. Uh, there's a board unit, there's an eight, twelve, you just add by fours, and the. Yeah, Tom Manlook and I had a meeting with the vendor and we discussed. Um, you know, a lot of questions that the committee had and whatnot. Um, and so we went back to committee with the debt that you have. Um, in your binder, you received last week. So the committee's recommending the place of an eight unit. Storage rack, so this rack would be placed, uh, in Usula Park. Probably into the left of the boat once, as you look for Barry Robert Group Two, just in the first parking area, the left of the boats. The cost of it is twenty-six thousand dollars upfront, uh, and that is it, that's what you pay. Then they bring the eight units that individually assign, there is, uh. Uh, within the eight unit, it allows you to co-mingle kayaks or paddleboards. Stand-up paddleboards, that was one of the big advantages that they saw. Uh, you also will share revenues. If we use the uh twenty dollars for the first two hours. That's the minimum, and then the town will get fifty percent of all revenues thereafter. So the first page in this section for you. Uh, is your break-even chart in terms of low, average, high usage. Um, they're forecasting break-evens anywhere between five and twelve years, I think, is, would be approximate. The, uh. Changes themselves, we have nothing really to do with it, they. Uh. Firm that releasing from is responsible for all the maintenance, they're responsible for software, they're responsible for collections and refunds and receiving. The app platform, this is all app-based, so you'll go on, just like Uber, you can't schedule it ahead, and you go on and you say, okay, I'm looking for a kayak or a paddleboard. You're gonna go in, you're gonna have your card already in there, then through the use of solar, which is gonna power the unit. And cellular device, which is gonna transmit the data to it, they're gonna be able to unlock that unit when you put, when you're there at the unit and say, I wanna unlock my paddleboard. And then they automatically debit, and at the end of every month, I believe it is, we then get money from rent fund. For the proceeds of, of revenues. We're able to move those, there's a platform that we will manage in terms of pricing. And availability, do you wanna let them in or out? The overall factors that we will manage. Our real obligation to the company is to help in the marketing of this, so whether that's Facebook or website, sign in on the street. Sign in on rail tracks, if you wanna get on, um, those are all things that we've already started talking about, the TIF committee have ways that we can help. Um. I've been babbling, so I guess I'll have questions.
Are there, have we talked with anyone who has things already, or is it something like this?
So I didn't know, the nearest is Auburn, and then beyond that is Westbrook. Um, they, we don't know, there's not enough history, they've only really been in Auburn for about a year. Actually, this is really a kind of groundbreaking thing for the area. Uh, I mean, not to say that it's a waste and it won't be successful, but there were some on the TIF committee that said, at the very least, at the very worst. Would spend twenty-six thousand dollars on a failed venture.
Yeah.
And at the very best, be making money in two years. So.
Yeah, I tend to not make any money off the stuff where you spent it on TIP anyways. Um, my, one question that I really think of is. Obviously, someone has, from a company has come and installed this, what's type of like local level, like. You know, oversight is there, you know, so if something gets damaged, something happens, um, you know. Are they gonna have that ability to come and fix it? And then the other thing I was thinking, just from like a. You know, what size life jacket I need, isn't gonna be the same size life jacket that like my husband would need or my kids would need. How is that, is that provided? I'm guessing it must be.
So I can't answer that question at all, and Steve, my guess is that things are adjustable and there'll probably be two life vests in each one, whether it's the children or, or the adult. Not sure. I do know that all the equipment is tagged RFID, so when the kayak comes out and the kayak goes back, it most of it's out, most of it's back. There will be a local, uh, contractor, if you will, that will be responsible for our cages. The goal for them, obviously, is to give them cages and then have this person responsible for both. Uh, but if they come in and they would check periodically, just the condition of everything. Yes, thank you. And then they are responsible for maintaining it. Uh, obviously, we have, where the user has a concern in their platforms to submit that as well. That specified in the master services agreement that they've given to us, and it's pretty much above what's reasonable. So we had concerns about, you know, rocks and whatnot. Um. They pick this up when we ask it to, and they're gonna create it to Kentucky, I think. For the winter for indoor storage, and then they'll bring it back on the date that we ask for it to be returned in the spring. So there are a lot of those things where it's like, that's gonna eat up your twenty-six thousand dollars. Turbines, it's been back and forth over the parts of five years, but it seemed like a really unique opportunity, something that was turnkey. Um. And something that tied in with the revitalization plan, what folks have said about how do we enhance our connection to the grid.
Sure.
And couple that with the new docks that I forgot to tell you that I think were delivered today for the swim area. And we think that that, you know, if the weather's good, it's gonna be really active down there, so.
I, I wanna be a part of like a, a inaugural launch.
You're gonna have to phone out.
So right, that's what I think there's something to do with life jackets in the lockers.
But I'm not sure about the sizing. They provide the paddling for like.
My, my big thing is the liability, even though they're accepting liability, there's a risk management page.
Yes.
Yeah, there is. Is there still anything that can come back to the town as, because we're.
They have the boilerplate whole harness, you can only get us for four hundred thousand. Um, obviously, we don't even want that, but it, it seems pretty bottom up.
Good job. So, eh, you know, thinking about. I've, for one, I, I think it's a great way for us to get more people down there, get more people utilizing that area. Um, I just wanna make sure that, you know, just with like, you know, we're talking about today about people not being notified of things that are happening, you know, I think that. Especially the Sula with the success of the, you know, the concert series and stuff that we had, I don't feel like we have signage and communication that really is reflective. Well, of all the things going on, I think we need to look at. Of, of all the things going on. I think we need to look at, um, you know, whether it's electronic sign, eh, or something, or even one that has like the ability to like change out. You know, messages on the bottom, because as much as, you know, I feel like I'm pretty like. I get online and I'll look at like our page, I'll look at the Facebook page. I know that there are a lot of people in the community that don't look at it nearly as much as I do. And I miss stuff and forget that things are going on, but I have to drive by there to bring the kids to school. So some sort of a visual reminder of all the things that are happening there. Cause we're investing in, you know, that part of the community. I think that we need to make it like a billboard, so to speak. Um, and also with the rail trail, I think that we need to, we're spending all of the money on like art. So I mean, people are coming through there and it's in the summer and it's hot, like. Let them know they can come down and like go in and do that. Um, they're not gonna know that otherwise, because the trail doesn't detour down there. Where are we gonna advertise this? I think that it's a great opportunity for us to kind of, you know, we need to spend more money on top of it. I hate saying that.
Full answer, one was, I mean, we had a conversation about this the other day and I don't have a paddleboard. But like, you know, your roadside DOT signs that you can program in their trailer and so bear with me. So you can go put it away. I know, but you can also put it on a music day. Guess what? There's no better way to communicate to everybody than to put it on the side. It's gonna be affected by the, what happened this morning, you can put it on the side of the road. Why? Or you've got a parade or you've got this or that. It covers so many different uses. So it's not that we're gonna leave it in the same spot all the time. But it's something that's got diverse basic uses. The Sportsman's Association has applied for a grant through Somerset County. They have a tip that captures value from the windmills. And they've applied for a grant, I think it's in the ballpark of fifteen thousand, um, to enhance signage along the trail. To support businesses and getting people into our communities to improve our economy. So part of that is. About like a year one incentive for businesses to join and then year two, they would pay, uh, a lot of it's, um, wayfinding signage. And so I think if that stuff comes together, they'll probably be looking at the tip. We've talked about partnering with the tip for a long time in that project. Um, and, and making sure that everything kind of matches.
I think that like roadside electronic thing aside, I think at like a minimum, I think the sign's ready for a refresh anyways. It's not like the best.
Yes.
Like, I don't think it really reflects like when.
The whole park revamp.
Yeah.
And I'm not anti roadside either. It's just kind of what, what you were saying that. I mean, we're already dumping all this time and energy into the park.
Uh, right now, it looks like the internet's a bottle deposit place.
As, as long as I can remember, it's been a lot too late. You need a telephone, set it up, plaque across the top. Uh, so I, I think there is definitely some need for, uh, uh, refreshing. Or someone could design something that would look fantastic out front of the park, whether it be digital or done by hand.
Keep more artwork everywhere that we like to throw money at. Why not? That's snazzy. Well, like the, uh, the Grinch sign, like me, I'm just thinking for the read, like. I read that and like, that's not like a huge expenditure, but like having that there is like a visual reminder. Why wouldn't we have that? Like it's, it's fruit too. Like it's, yeah.
So if parks wanted to play with something there as far as what they would like to see out front or, um. Or community of what they'd like to see. I, I don't know what should be out there, but I think we've moved beyond too leaning telephone.
Yes. Yeah.
I, I mean, in my mind, it's gonna be something with a header and something where you can take those. Like the lots are all, when you're at a lots of all that comes out and the plane goes in, you're, and so you're gonna have things like that. I will take this to Parks Committee. I will ask them to consider all the things about the two of your proposals, then we'll probably visit the tip committee and then we'll come back to you in February.
Do they have their, and I promise you know this, their own website first of all?
No.
No.
So everything that we've got going on down there can, I mean, who?
I, you know, I think ultimately we had.
It's kind of gives a wonderful job with the runner river.
Yeah.
Saying, I mean, that's a long time project and then this is to that extent, but. To promote just that section, maybe it's only.
And we are looking to do a lot more. The, the parks is looking to do a lot more down there with this coming season, so.
Right.
So. Yeah, I really appreciate it, but it's almost time to go already. Yeah.
Okay, can you, um, help me word it?
It'd be a motion to accept the Tiff Committee's recommendation, prove up to twenty six thousand dollars for the release of an eight unit kayak stand up paddleboard unit with. Rent fund.
No, it's so moved.
Five years, right? Yeah, five years, yep. It is okay, there's a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone. No, uh, any other recommendations from Ted? Okay, okay, uh, there we go. And the special action on Usula Park Boat Launch Dock Replacement. Uh, what I did was I took the bid specs of the state and provided me, um, from when they built the last dock. And I issued that and asked folks, local contractors, I think I sent it to six or eight people and I booked them, but I. Send me what you want. If you have something public or an ultimate, try to provide that for us. Uh, so you're fully, uh. Responsive bidders to the spec or NF Luze New Harbor Marine, Nickerson Yard Maintenance. And I'm just, I'm missing one on that list, I believe. Most they were not fully in there. It was Chesterfield Associates Incorporated. So those. Identical proposals range from eighteen fifty with loose, uh, up to fifty nine thousand four oh five with Chesterfield Associates. Uh, start with rocks and wilderness, they offered you the through flow surface, uh, and so that the picture even their deck, I hope. Of the type of circuit material that that has, um, that would be technically on the surface. It also has a aluminum base. Um, so that's what makes it better.
If that's something that we, I mean, we didn't ask for, it's what we really needed for that, then I guess. I'm at the point where I'm going to accept it's one of our local preferred vendors that we. Award the Sula Park Boat Launch Replacement bid to the low bid and local business owner of NF Luze Inc. For the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred.
It is a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? And he is.
He's also due a third.
Yes, yeah, uh. When you give the credit, credit spec from the original, back to the original, it's gonna be the exact same thing that we lost. Okay. That's sixty four feet. Four sections of. And four, four sections of sixteen.
It's apples, apples, oranges, oranges, like we've talked about before.
I issued this like the same spec, the thick base spec from the state.
Who installs it?
We're, we're gonna install it.
Okay.
That includes celebration, everybody. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everyone to go with NF Luze. Uh, discussion action on public works, push their purchase. Uh, the department approached me probably four, five weeks ago about the possibility, it's been longer than that. Uh, about the possibility of purchasing a butcher. This butcher would go on the front end of our loader. Would be of great assistance in cleaning, expecting to buy a big parking lot, our downtown. As well as the new parking lot out at Ashley Way. Uh, so I asked to go with prices. They went with prices. Your low price on that fourteen foot truck is allied equipment out of Harlem for six thousand dollars. Uh, you know, I didn't do a cost analysis for you, but the guys are right up there saying it's more efficient and your cost savings is generally just tremendous. You're gonna find a break even in probably a year or three, you know, and labor, uh, in equipment. So it took them approximately four and a half to five hours to file back the land parking lot the other day. With nobody there because they kept getting called there. So.
Oh, okay, okay, right.
So it's a thing like that and the downtown cleanup would be far slicker as well. So, um. That's their ask and the ally equipment is based in courtesy of them before. They've been very responsive and they can have this to us by the next week.
Okay, three D doesn't.
And that's for the fourteen, not what they prefer the fourteen or the twelve. No, they prefer the fourteen and I mean, you can see the scribble on there. It was sixty five hundred. And the department called and said, hey, can you do any better? Cause if we keep it at the five thousand, well, eighty, that can come down to six thousand. So that's why you've got the six.
Can you run fourteen downwards?
Even as a town? Think so. Yeah. I don't. I don't know if that leaves you any room. I, I mean, it might be overthinking it, but with that on the loader. At fourteen feet, do you, can you meet vehicles on Main Street? Twelve foot is pushing it for meeting something. Eighteen foot, I think you would, and I need to go up pace. I'm just in my mind, like, wow, we have fourteen back. If you were only using it at the parking lot, it's not really that hard to get from the town brush to the parking lot, but for the downtown section, that's why I worry about the fourteen feet. Twelve, you can stay in your lane and utilize the break down, but at fourteen, you're, you're, you're quite a bit bigger. Uh, I, I guess in four ball, I would just double check with them and make sure that they can actually run that fourteen to get where they want to go. I don't know. It's just. Right, I think fourteen is you really only see in parking lots. You don't, they're always left, they, they don't really get moved from where they go. So if a fourteen will work, I'm all for it. Uh, otherwise, just go with the smaller twelve, if that makes sense.
So do we wanna make a motion to table until we find out the answer or make a motion before the fourteen if it's allowed? And if not, before with the twelve with the same company?
Probably just prove a dollar and let them sort out the. I didn't have a price call. We wanna just approve the six, up to six thousand and then you can sort out.
Sure. Okay. So moved.
Motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion on that? Sorry, am I confused?
No, I was, I was ready to do it and I have fourteen to offer while.
Yeah, okay, uh, so, uh, the discussion is done, uh, all those in favor? That's everybody. And I hope that does work. Should save some time. Okay, we're doing discussion action over the summer maintenance contract. Uh, we've received the renewal on notice from Nickerson Yard Maintenance. They have had our contract. Uh, for a number of years now and it's good. They are asking for a continued price of forty five thousand dollars. So don't increase over previous year. Administration's recommendations to accept it and authorize me to sign a contract for twenty twenty four.
That's the exact same on his last year?
Yes.
When I move that we accept their proposal.
Second, uh, any further discussion? Has to increase cover. It hasn't really moved since we've used them. Okay. Yep. Uh, any others? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everyone. Okay, uh, discussion action on. Hope to operate a reading from town of Norwood Walk and the, uh, the main regional conversation. Somebody LLC couldn't spit that up. Okay, so we have talked about this previously and executives have sent me one bringing it to today. Before the start, and there were some concerns that I had about the proposal. Uh, the terms were relatively even as we've created, um, at last check. Everything was agreeable in the proposal with the exception of personal and property taxes, which is section seven of the agreement. Uh, the proposal was to allow them to seek exemptions under state programs. In local programs for reduction of their real or personal property. Uh, I pushed back on that significantly, uh. They asked about tip, I, I mean, that's agreeable to us. The funds still come in at the rate that they would come in. Uh, but to go take a state program and then us, it's a, most of their stuff is gonna be personal property at this facility. The real estate's gonna be owned by Waste Management, so you've got a building and you've got the equipment in there. That would theoretically be eligible for the business equipment tax exemption, which they would then pay zero. And the state picks up fifty percent. In unusual circumstances, the state may remember sixty, but that requires a bunch of hoops to be jumped through. Uh, so. I pushed back knowing that we want them to be able to move forward with their projects as a slug solution. Um, and they have agreed now, if we allow them to participate in state tax reduction programs. That they would make the town whole. So if they participate in this Betty program, the business equipment tax exemption program, they're not paying anything. The state sends possible tax for fifty percent. We would be eligible for one hundred percent if we hadn't allowed to participate, Waste Management. The regional conversion facility, main regional conversion facility would give us the other fifty percent. So we have no loss revenue. It allows them the business tax, the benefit of their development, capital, they're big, complete right now. Um, and that would my big concern in terms of negotiating, having something like that and then not being able to. You know, so that was their counter. I thought it was reasonable as one of the remain whole. And I know that it's a fundamental thing for a lot of folks with participating in state tax programs, it's still being taxed by dollars, but at the end of the day, we want to attract investment.
Yeah.
So I believe this is a good deal. You have the red line version in your pack and I'm happy with it. The board have any questions?
No.
Any members of the public have questions on this? Please.
Um, so I am just trying to figure out, my understanding is that they're gonna build a PFA facility. And is it going to be, um, sludge predominantly? Or we don't know where the PFAs are gonna become from?
The, what they are proposing is the, the PFAS will be treated onsite that comes from the municipal swamp. That they're bringing in. It's intended to be a municipal only facility.
Is it only from the state of Maine or is it from anywhere in New England?
Anywhere, anywhere.
And my, and the other question I had was, my understanding is for the most part. Well, when you're trying to, the current PFAs are basically taking PFAs out of the water or the sludge, whatever. And you have PFAs left. Although I think there's a new tent now that is being developed in Illinois, but they actually break down the PFAs. So are we talking about taking everybody's sludge from New England? And then we are left with the PFAs, which are gonna be in Norwood Walk?
Yes.
And then forever gonna have Norwood Walk PF, concentrating all the PFAs for the Norwegians.
Yes.
Basically what we're trying to do?
When they explained it, it sounded like they were doing, like it was going, what? It wasn't like there was a stop sign, but like, I, I don't remember because they went into the kind of science of it, but like.
So the. Most of the PFAS will stay with the solid. Now, I don't wanna speak for the organization, but through the hearings, it's my mistake. Most of the PFAS does stay in the solid. They are already landfilling sludge. So it's already going in their way. Uh, uh, that's dropped off as their own internal corporate policy, uh, but neither here nor there. Their intention is to break the PFAS away, landfill the thirty percent moisture material. And then send the liquid up to Ensign Madison to be retreated through their process system. Um, and so, uh, yes, there is.
But that makes the, yeah, I take the PFAS out of the water.
Yes, and then so it's gonna stick with us.
Is don't have PFAS there.
Correct.
Then it, then it concentrates the PFAS, which goes back to Norfolk.
And then it's secured into the solid and international facility. Yes.
So what's, so if those PFAS, then if we are the PFAP capital of New England, it sounds like we're gonna be. Um, what guarantee, I mean, you're saying this is a great deal for Norfolk, cause we're gonna be taxes, whatever. But if it contaminates our local wells and everything else, then that's gonna be a real problem. So I guess, um, are they? It seems, seems like New York is to protect this guy, you know? Um. Obviously, I'm not gonna be living there. It's much larger problem. People, it's not gonna be an issue for me, but it might be an issue for a lot of other people. So I'm just trying to figure out, no, what's their liability if all the laws get contaminated? Do they have to pay for water for everybody?
So those are individual claims against an organization, whether it's gonna be against Waste Management, disposal services, main waste management, national, international. Or this main regional conversion facility. They carry for us coverages, uh, you know, there's a ten million, a ten million, a ten million, ten million, a two million and a twelve million. The pollution legal liability annual aggregate for the town is twelve million. Whether that's for individual claims, I couldn't speak to that. I'm not an attorney. Uh, but the.
Doesn't sound like much money. I heard what he's willing to have.
Right, but the.
I.
The issue is that this is the conversion facility, which is already permitted locally. It's now most of the way through the DEP permitted. And I think your concern is really with Waste Management. Yes, it does sound that way because in, in the end, we're relying on the same liner or the trash itself that. That protects us from that leachate would be. That protects us from that leachate would be protecting us from the PFAS. Uh, any runoff from that is captured, I'm sure you're aware, right, everything's captured and is trucked to Anson, uh.
I just saw the article the other day and said that the biggest. Um, what place to find PFAS are leachates from land. And that's not even a landfill that's concentrating PFAs. So is there anything that we're doing as a town to require enough? To check the leachate from the reg, you know, I'm just, so that at least the people are aware, just. It seems like you're gonna need to protect yourself, it's just mine.
The, the town has not, to my knowledge, ever gotten to the science of their operations and we've always just deferred to. Main DEP and EPA and the associates, associated entities with the science of small. Because leachate is, is tested. And their leachate is constantly monitored and tested, because it can't just go well, uh.
But doesn't mean that they're tested for, for PFAs. If they're tested for bacteria, then maybe.
That's a good, that, that is a good question, I, I guess, I, I would, I guess I would like some further explanation on that as well. Uh, just to see when it does go, if, if they're. Which there shouldn't be higher levels of PFAS in the leachate going out, or if they foresee that, uh.
What, that heater system, with how the thing was going, I mean, like, it sounded like this entire new system that they're investing these millions of dollars in. It's a lot of ways they've been doing things, it's different now with this system, like the way they explained how this thing goes, like you're very about not.
Right, if you would like to agenda another item, courtesy to the organization, I think we're caught, we're beyond the scope of. The conversion facility and we're now into waste management disposal, they were not notified that we're gonna be talking about their business practices. Testing requirements, relationship with DEP and whatnot, if you want that, they have a annual meeting, I think it's January first, they offer that to us. Um, and that would be a time that you could ask your organizational operational questions.
Have you, do they still have the like report they came up with, like public? Is that still on? There was like a whole beautiful presentation they put together in preparation for the public hearing we had, and I thought that was like. Posted somewhere, that had a lot of really good information about, like their work with DEP and.
It could be, it could be also that I unpublished it, but I can publish it right back, um. It is.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Because I know we also had conversations about the water that was extracted would be tested for PFAS levels. And if it was too high to go to the sewer, uh, to the Anson District, that they would be treating that on. On onsite, and I, I don't think we've ever got a follow up to know if they were.
Well, that means that they clean the water, but then the PFAS then go back to Northern. Right, because what is what's left is the PFAS, after they take it out of the water. Once you actually break it down, which until recently, there wasn't any technology to do that, is my understanding.
Definitely out of the depth of my knowledge, I must have fallen gas, no, I do not know. So I, I think the other thing related to the agreement is that they are not legally obligated to present this agreement. They, they are no obligation to run an operating agreement with us or a side.
That's agreement?
That's right.
Yeah.
So this is, this is something that after they went through the permitting process. Uh, they presented to us as an opportunity, understanding that there was gonna be increased traffic through town and things like that, and the impact of that on us. Well, and, and for those watching, I guess, and for those here that maybe aren't aware, that they're gonna pay an extra ten cent per ton on all other waste. It's coming into the landfill, so that's a plus up from where we are on the first, I think, three hundred and twenty thousand tons annually. Um, and that's gonna continue to increase, um, with the. Inflation error, right, you're also looking at the tonnage coming in will be weighed and paid if the town is wet, even though it will be dry. Uh, and then. That's about it, you add in their estimated taxes next year in twenty twenty five, which would be their ramp up year, that would be just under three hundred thousand dollars in additional. Which is nice, but we certainly, I guess, will follow up with them and see if we can get a little bit more clarity, uh. On those PFAS levels and, I guess, I guess what we had left with unanswered from our original. Meetings or that they didn't have clarity on at that point in time. I know they touched on all of it, but I don't think we had any definite answers and are all clear.
That is sometimes controlled by the.
I mean.
I, I, I didn't wanna say that we, we fall back on the state DEP, because their regulations are much stricter and there's people that do this full time. Uh, but I do think it is our due diligence in order to check this stuff so that we know, uh. Yeah, just for ease of mind and for the, right, members of the public. So I think really just.
And in your mind, can we accept this agreement?
I, I, I think we can accept the agreement, I don't think that there's, uh. Any wrench here, if you will, uh, I think it's really just more information that I, I, you pointed out that we don't have, you know, key things to answer. Uh. So yeah, I'm comfortable with it, and of course, it is the board's discretion, thanks.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we, um. We accept the post operating agreement between the town of Nordwalk and main regional conversion facility LLC.
Motion is second, uh, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor, that's everyone. Uh, and we will certainly follow up to see if we can get some clarity on those, uh, and then make those public. Yeah, well, they, they under current contract come in and will give us an update on the facility operations and whatnot on an annual basis. Uh, that happens usually in spring, January to April, I don't know if we had that last year with them, just because of this process. Right, but I'll reach out to management and, uh, see if they won't come in, I have to defer to the year, once we get budgets done here. And have them come in and we'll make sure that we communicate that out to you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, all right, uh, discussion action on declared write-in candidacy, oh, right, uh, local office to the offices. Uh, so this is something that kind of been floating around, uh, for the last five years now, I believe since twenty eighteen. The state passed a law that allows municipalities to adopt the same process, towns and cities to adopt the same process, the state uses for their elections. Now, that is you get a number of signatures on a petition in order to be onto the ballot. Uh, and then you can't just go write in anybody's name, not that you can, but if you do, and they're not a big player, writing, it just doesn't count. So, um, it cut both ways, and I understand that, but from an administrative perspective, the counting in the process. Um. It, it's easier, uh, you consider transparency in terms of people wanting to get to know the candidates that could be serving them for office. Uh, in that, this supports that. Uh, there are a lot of towns around the state that have adopted this, in, sorry, it's twenty fifteen, that. Uh, the legislature adopted the new rule that would allow you to participate. And pretty, pretty much what it says is that if you wanna run as a write-in candidate, because you didn't wanna circulate your papers, or whatever reason, if you missed the deadline. So it wouldn't be the same, the day that your nomination papers are due, so this year it's January third, if you wanted to be a write-in on the ballot. You had to notify the town office in writing by the deadline for those papers to be filed. And if your name is not on the list of authorized write-in candidates, then if somebody writes a name in, then that doesn't get counted, it just gets simply. For counting purposes.
Do they have to write themselves in for a specific? Open position or just like in general, like? So if they wanna make themselves a writing candidate for like, say, the school board, they have to specify school board or is it like?
Just, no, they would have to specify, they have to specify the office that they're seeking. The exemption to this is if you have, say, a school board seat and nobody's running for the school board, then that is open for anybody to be written in. If there's no candidate that appears on the ballot. If a candidate appears, then in order to be a write-in for that office, you would have to be declared write-in.
What about when we have two positions open and only one candidate that's on the ballots, like we have to fill two? Is that still a vacant seat at that point?
Okay, that's correct, right, so as long as there's not some, okay, that actually makes you feel better about it.
Yeah, that's.
That was really on the fence with this, uh. Because I thought it was hindering the process, but with that explanation, I, I actually, I'm much more for it. Uh, it does simplify it and then, right, there's no one running for it. And I'm much more comfortable with just, you know, few upset people deciding that they're gonna put somebody in that position, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, I kinda, and I, and I reached out before this, like, my only hesitation with this was, you know, the flip side, sometimes someone who maybe. Wouldn't take it upon themselves, for whatever reason, maybe it's, you know, competence, whatever it is, like. Put themselves out there to be voted on, and we've got some great people in that way, but then in the same regard, you know, some of these. Positions I'm thinking of, it's for things that are managing like school budgets that are billions and millions of dollars, so maybe you should have enough, you know. Or thought in like, or to to, to say, yes, I wanna do this person, like, eh, why not, it sounds good, I guess, um, so, yeah, that's.
Uh, so entertain a motion to approve the article for insertion into the warrant. So, second, there's a motion on the second, uh, any further discussion? Uh, please.
How are you gonna let people know that that's gonna be the move?
So it has to be accepted at town meeting, and then it won't go into effect until twenty twenty four. And we'll do this as a move right there, uh, by. Secret ballot, show of hands, how do we actually decide on this at town meeting, will it be on the? Uh, I was gonna put it just on in person. If, so, so we would vote on it in the meeting? In the meeting, okay, yeah, which I'm actually uncomfortable with that, because that's the easiest way to do that. If you wanna shift another way, we can do that with my life more. With the explanation for everyone. It's difficult to explain public hearings to people come to public hearings. Right. And do we even have a time for public hearings on this, if we did, we do? Yeah. Guess I would ask the board which way they felt, would you rather see this?
I just worry about if we're doing this at community and it's open, that we could just get into a twenty minute, like.
Your due diligence to put it out there and then, and if people like pay attention and feel strongly about it, hopefully they'll come. I'm sure that at that time, I mean, we can work out some games, so that we're ahead of it, uh.
So we're more for being on the ballot and having two public hearings before, yes.
Uh, for me, I just think ballot makes it, you know, because a lot of times I think if people haven't done their due diligence and they don't know what it is, they'll tend to just not vote. And then, you know, if they have, then they know which way they wanna go, and that way, it sort of avoids any sort of heated, like.
Yes.
Confrontational things that could a- occur at the meeting that could, you know, deter from other important business.
Yeah, and I, I, I think I would like to see public hearings, because that will take some pressure off from the actual meeting night of not having to explain it. Three different ways to four different people, uh. They probably won't be well attended, but at least they'll have an.
Well, if we record them, it can be on our page, like, even if they're not well attended.
Right, so the other thing is with any referendum, I think we've gotta put something like this in that time media newsletter. Yeah, it doesn't get involved, but we can distribute it widely, this last newsletter, I think I probably turned fifty five seven. So, you know, if we can get that kind of return and get this into front hands, that helps. What do you want to see for working on that motion? Uh, well, we have a motion to add the article, and I will just get a public hearing, it would settle, and then they draft the article, I'll state targets to the top, okay? So there's a motion on the second, uh, any further discussions, see none, all votes in favor, and that's everyone. Uh, okay, uh, discussion action on sewer use ordinance, the town of Nordwalk. This is, it's got a lot of red on it, right, but so a lot of it is references to. Different sections in the. Ordinance, or used to be articles now, sections and subsections and blah blah. This reason for revisiting us is to get the sewer commission onto three year staggered term. So everything on sewer commission is three years, when the annual sewer use ordinance was passed in nineteen ninety. Two amended in ninety two again, and then amended in ninety three, they never fixed the language to get them a previous dagger term, they were missing the clause. So we, uh, two two year term, two two year term, one one year term, so every year there's a sewer commissioner that has to run for one year term. And every year they have to go through it, it's the only committee that's not authored, really, on three year terms, it's elected. Uh, and that is the ultimate intent in the place, so this, uh. Changes your referencing to the board of sewer commissioners to sewer division, it changes your board selectment to select board, it changes a lot of terminology stuff. Um. Fixes some of the abbreviations that we use without explanation. And then in composition of the, um, sewer commission and their duties, sorry, on the flag. It has the change that after the first scattering, it then transitions over to. Uh, a three year term for the commissioners, so. Uh, we will have to go through, that's on one of the last pages, section thirteen, we'll have to go through the process of. Terms expiring after this year, and then if, if approved at town meeting, then. Those expiring terms would be reelected for three years, we get them staggered, if the pain would take us three years to get it done. But it cleans up a long mess.
So what are we looking for, just a motion to accept the new amendments to the sewer use ordinance for the town of Nordwalk?
And to certify the language.
And to certify the language. And send it to the town committee.
The motion on the second, second, any further discussion on that? Uh, right, with all the discussion, all those in favor, and that's everyone. Uh, yeah, a public comment, any, we're gonna do some budgets after this, which you're more than likely to state later. So, uh, but does the public have anything else? We can pull something out of order tonight. Yeah, well, see nothing else for the public, we will dive into, uh, twenty twenty four. Uh, so you don't have the cover sheet, because we don't know exactly where we're gonna fall out, right, yeah. Uh, I have the fire department budgets, nothing will affect next, and what they have the next deal. But I've got, I think, the preliminary number for that, I'm beginning with plus nine percent there. Um, the fire, why, not available, I mean, we said, and we tried to think things down, but, um, it's. Maybe that was changed between now and when I expected it will, uh, the libraries, the trustees can not be recommended. And, and we want any more of that, you know, it's a very small budget there, but that's not done. So we are, uh, and it's a matter of finding stuff in the budgets, which you wanna see pulled out. Or questioned, or recommended at a different level, we don't want to pull it out, recommend it at a different level. Uh, and then, once you get all, uh, you have what you want, and then we can go there, the revenue and whatnot, then we're gonna look at. What we contribute to reserve account, what we contribute in, uh, to offset revenues, I E, post community fees. Um, and then the potential use of sub clause. Into how we would set it up, so, um, I'll go department by department until you say you don't wanna do it anymore. Uh, with what I've got, what I've tried to do is get you explanations on the side for your, if they adjust them some votes that are important. One of the other things I'm planning to do this year, uh, I, I'd like to get a separate budget book, Scotty, he has one, and it's just kind of a standalone thing. It allows him to put some additional content and explanation based department. Thought prohibitive, I think, so I'm just gonna have a lead in, if, if they're back, but tell them, it just says, you know, here are some of the highlights. Where we lie, about where we are, or how we're gonna end up, especially if we end up, um. Up seven eight or nine percent, that's all gonna depend on niche revenues at the end. So we'll start with administration, if you will, if we're all in the same order. Um, uh, mine's contractual for finance, I budgeted plus five percent. Uh, the full time line is, is a current employee, don't know the status there necessarily, but that's a bump up, kind of random. But, you know, we, we may need to attract new employees in the next year, and we wanna be prepared for that. We've also got wage adjustments in the contract, so longevity's increased by twenty five cents per year, uh, per, per. Stage, if you will, and then we also added on that lower five year stage. Uh, and so we've got that, that's what the calculation is there, I didn't move the part time, full time with the balance. Of our office right now, it's just, it's. Just gonna confuse more than what we had, but, um, anyway, so there's a good, good chunk in this. Across all departments, a majority of what we're seeing increases in our people. Yeah. It's labor, and if you. Calculate what the value, what people are between your town manager line and with. Unemployment line, that's where most of you budgeted, so, um, your health insurance costs, that's up, again, it's unknown with employees. Staffing, your plans are up four point two five percent across the board, so it's just about fourteen hundred dollars a month per employee that we're paying for health insurance right now. Uh, and also where, where the reimbursement is going up ten percent for employees that do not make our insurance. So those are things that you're gonna see in departments, if they don't pay it, they're, we're gonna pay them fifty percent of their eligible benefit, kind of as that token, thank you for. Maybe they're out of pocket expenses, if they have a spouse, or if they're a veteran, they have a VA plan, but thank you for using our. Or if they're a veteran, they have a VA plan, but thank you for using our money as wisely as we can. So that's contractual. Uh, the travel, I bumped that up slightly, it was a contractual increase in my reimbursement. Uh, and then conferences, training, we don't know what that's gonna bring for that. Your printed form, I bumped that up, I mentioned the welcome pack. Uh, I've got a couple other things I'm getting priced out. Ideally, the welcome pack would come from tip, but we'll see how that plays out. Nothing's getting any cheaper on that printing front. Uh, postage is flat, but it's an increased normal spending. There are still a couple of buildings that are outstanding, but fat matter issues that we're being told that they're gonna be postponed. Uh, water rates are at ten percent, not so impactful here, as it's going to be all in public safety, but it is what it is. Electricity, I bumped that up slightly just because we're trending with increased usage, but our rate is locked through C and Brown right now. Uh, onto the second page, you've got department equipment, you can see how high the jewel expense number part. That is primarily the cost of the generator, if we can keep it in our department budget, we're owing to and avoid having to draw that out of our reserve account and keep the town office reserve account at a healthy balance. The audit, the audit increased thirty four percent this year. That's a contractual thing. If you want to bid it out, we can bid it out for next year. It's really difficult to find quality municipal auditors. Down on the uniforms line, that's contractual, we're offering the administrative folks branded wear. The increase of four thousand on software support. That is a forecast, Montreal, which is our software platform for all of our municipal operations in terms of collections, assessing and whatnot. The I T contract that we awarded last year, this last year, as well as the cost of website. Maybe we'll see if they have a copy, or I bumped that up. I'm really not sure, it's gonna depend on how we move ahead with printing projects and whatnot. I can print a lot of stuff, these welcome packs, I printed those in-house, um, but we're seeing over this in terms of copying material because we're, we're printing in a lot more color. And whether it's admin or the stuff that the dudes of the library, it looks nice for five cents a page, it's just, it's value and I if you say cut it, then we cut it, but, um, it's, it's looks good on us, how's that? Uh, tax billing. That is the printed postage, and I already have prices for next year, but it's up. Um, and so I'm, I'm pretty sure that's where we're gonna settle over there. Uh, and then my new expense here, it's not really the most timely time to ask, uh, but I'm asking for additional twelve thousand dollars, uh, as a newsletter expense line. So they tend to be able to take the newsletter that we print out here in office right now and send it to the bank and kind of that market in here and get that every door direct mail to all of your residents. In nor drop, and you know, there's a handful of cars that they get just because of mailers. It's something that in my trainings, like, how do you get ahold of everybody? We can text and let's go right to everybody, you can do this and do that. Everybody's gonna need that mail. Um, and managers, clerks are finding an effective tool, so I've asked for folks if they want to contribute to the newsletter, whether this gets approved or not. To be contributed, if you want to write about your organization, a department, something that's public interest. And then, you know, based upon space we can publish, but right now it's me, it's Becky Ketchum and our librarian that's writing articles. I write, you know, three quarters of it. Kelly did a real, librarian did a really good job of of that, and it's a lot of promotion, you know, people at the department, the fire department, they deserve recognition, maybe it's an institute photo. Anyway, that's my ask. If you don't like it, well, you can cut it, how's that? Uh, and for tax interests, I bumped back a little bit. Uh, I'm not sure if that's gonna be the case or not, that we're gonna see the decrease there, but you know, from the conservative budgeting perspective, I pulled that off. Uh, down through that rest of the page for revenues, those are really unchanged, just getting aligned with what we've got, I'm knowing the age of face when I look at, because I bumped up. This next page, the one to look at is your interest income line. Uh, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars in interest income, you'll see nothing's posted right now. In my base account, I've got, I think, forty nine thousand dollars in interest revenue for this year. And I think we're gonna see the net net, once we calculate our C D interest, we're gonna be well over a hundred thousand. In terms of what the towns are gonna be on its money at the bank. So I've increased that to fifty. Once we get that final number, it's something that we could adjust in terms of offsetting expense. I just don't want to rely on that, knowing that, well, not knowing, but thinking the interest rates are gonna soften. And I don't want to chase to the hundred and twenty five, a hundred and fifty we might get this year. The fifty seems reasonable, we could probably get a sixty or seventy, but then if markets, then just go completely the other way, then we're gonna end up having to cut that, and it'll take an expense on your books. So, uh, everything down through the rest of the way is about the same. And what that represents is an increase to the department net net of seventeen five, uh, five point six three.
More of inflation, right?
And, and, I mean, what are you gonna cut? And a lot of it has to do with the new contract. And, yeah. This is the, the year one is a heavy year for us, right? It's gonna be the longevity, and it's gonna be that eighty five instead of the sixty.
Almost coming.
If, right, so, okay, any questions on that?
I like the newsletter.
Any thoughts on anything?
I, I do, I think.
No, thank you.
Uh, elected officials, that is cookie cutter for last year. I have not ever gone into the business of the select board of wage. It's something like that, so it needs to change that, okay? It's something.
But the same center, not.
Never changed. Right, the, you know, the budget committee could do something like that, that's really the most responsible and neutral thing. You obviously control my pay and I don't control yours, so. Um, uh, these are right straight down through what they were last year, and I don't see a reason to change that. The one thing that I was trying to open to include, and I didn't include this year, just because of the condition of the budget, was new voting votes. Something that pops up more efficiently, that's more space friendly. People probably wouldn't like as much because they wouldn't have a curtain behind them, but they would be the freestanding tables, like three sided with shields. Um, and then more city, if you will, but.
I know, right, it's weird, but I like. I've even thought of it another way.
It's okay, I think would be the ones more public works friendly in terms of sound, it kind of stored and things like that. These cases that both voters come out, you know, eight, ten foot aluminum boxes, and then they get assembled.
And that's what I've always thought, I don't think I've ever planned anything different.
That probably goes right there.
Like, I don't know, like, again, being sure, but like, it's sense like.
It's out because of those two reasons, money and public perception.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, everybody. I like my stickers and my curtains. I'm not getting them later.
Uh, tax assessing, the assessing even has asked for a one hundred dollar a month, twelve hundred dollar a year increase in the contract. And then the G I S map and the cost of all this technology stuff is going up. The sixty two hundred dollars is what we actually spent in twenty twenty two, and I'm forecasting that I'll be spending in twenty twenty four. It's a six point four percent increase of last year, but it's only sixteen hundred grand dollars.
And when, when does, does that get updated? I mean, does that?
Per contract or the mapping.
Oh, the mapping.
The mapping, honestly, it changes, it comes, it's more like.
Do we do it, do they do it? When, when does that actually update? You know what I mean?
The information.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just learned how to do this the last month or so. And so now I can update it whenever I want. I have to do the extract files, I can send it up, so I can change your address, mail, I can address the system. And I can upload that information now to the website, and I can get it done. Right now, there's a hiccup with our trio, which is our internal, it cannot pull the report in the file to send pictures. So the pictures are all. But the information on there is weeks. The information, and I have done that. If there are mapping errors that is done once a year and that was done in the last six weeks, probably. Those have to be able to send all the deans and maps. Send them to answer, we send them hard copy, then they make the adjustments. So. Okay, public works. Yeah.
Go to the last page too much.
Right, so, yeah, the, the expenses up six point four. The net to, well, in this, this evening, so the line's probably gonna disappear, it's a hundred and sixty three percent over last year because you don't, you deal with the offset of excise tax. So let's talk about the expense, that's really important. Uh, your full time wage is a lot, I, I calculated it out by employee, by contract, and tried to stay conservative. Uh, we do have some unknowns in terms of turnover, we have unknowns in terms of short term, long term disabilities, the people returning to work. I calculated that in and tried to meter it, I counted some at sixty percent of the year, some, you know. I tried to do the best that I could. Your salaries are up thirty thousand two hundred fifty dollars in the budget. Uh, health insurance, that's an increase, it's plan plus four point five percent. That department, you know, it's very lucky, right now, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven folks that are eligible for benefits at Public Works, and only two of them are taking the talents. So all of these guys have taken the forty percent, so we've got the benefits public covered, but we've got the benefit of folks that have been in the service and elected to go to VA benefits, so that is a I know it's a large number, but we get a huge benefit from the pool of employees that we have, and I have to leave question in case I lose some of those and need to replace. Your fight is directly tied to your wages, benefits, same thing. Um, workers are slightly up, your insurance property counter, I put that up fifteen hundred dollars, we've got a brand new truck. Um, and things floating around, you can only imagine that we're able, that stuff is gonna go up, but uh, we do have that new asset, and I imagine that that's gonna go up this next year. The telephone expense is just about double. That's the garage phone plus the employees' phone.
Yeah.
And so I don't envision the town providing a town cell phone anymore. I think we're going to, if the employees are eligible uh, in my sub-forman, that's what he wants, he wants to keep his own phone. Uh, then we would just give them the twenty five dollar a month. Instead of us paying the forty five or fifty dollars a month for a town cell phone, so, uh, that will probably happen January first regardless. Uh, moving on down through, no changes, no changes, we get to software support. Uh, we ink the cost of what we monitor vehicles with is increased largely because of the uh, dash cams that we're using. So I do think that we're gonna see a decrease at the end of the day in terms of our property casualty insurance, but when that comes, I don't know. I didn't want to budget that in, and also the computer monitoring, your I T contract is, is a factor in that. Um, the rest of the budget may remain relatively unchanged, there's a small uptick in the uniforms. And I cut out resident sand, we've been carrying that, too, not well, resident sand, at the end of the day, we don't quantify it, and we don't ever apply it to the budget, so we buy our sand, the residents will have sand unless it becomes a supply issue for the roads.
So with our equipment, maintenance, repair, we came in, our actual was, you know, I think a chunk over what we actually budgeted for, is that something we need to? Was that just like a random one off thing, or should we actually be budgeting more so that we're not pulling?
It goes up and down, uh, you'll notice that in the fire department budget too, some years they're gonna spend a lot on making, some years you're not, um, it's.
Is it better to build it into the budget and not use it, or like?
Uh, you could. You could, but usually if you're gonna overspend that, you're gonna spend somewhere else. So like, we've got vehicle fuel, we're budgeted at forty, but we've only spent thirty two so far.
Okay.
So I didn't budget that back down, I left that at forty. It's not line item, this is, this is a planning tool.
Okay.
But, you know, if you thought that we were in such tight budget, that we needed to bump that up, I'd have to do that.
Like the equipment, like the one there. The, the, those numbers weigh out different too, what's that one?
Uh, what was it? So, so those are gonna get reclassed into different categories, I can't remember exactly what the week ticket was on that, and I don't have that itemized sheet.
Yeah, no, that's why I just, I see twenty nine hundred, then the budget was for five hundred for this year, and we're almost twenty grand.
Uh, and then we're back to a five hundred dollar.
There was a, you know, a few thousand dollars of that was, um, the equipment to put up our salt and sand.
Gotcha.
That, I know it's equipment rental, but that needs to be what your road expense kind of the thing.
Gotcha.
But I asked for all those to be reclassed, and I didn't want to hold this budget, this is what we need to get out of the gate with, so. Uh, so like I said, that last line is deceiving, and I'm gonna pull it off from this sheet, that percent change, to say that public works is up hundred and sixty three percent isn't right. I mean, it is, but it isn't, so. It kind of is what it is.
Well, so there's some reason that we had to allot money for sand.
I mean, there might have used to have been.
We went through this, and there was some. Okay. I mean, I'm comfortable with it going away, I just, I did some silly.
It's still here because we couldn't for some reason.
I honestly think it was something just to break it out of, I think we're gonna give public works the credit, the two thousand dollars by saying. Right. It's like resident sand, not salt, yeah, and uh, and there is a thing that we voted on at town meeting about, off right to post.
Yes, we do, okay.
Yeah, so I'm not worried about the budget line, it's something that's just well in there. Questions, concerns, areas you want me to revisit?
We can change.
They were surprised they had it, I just, that's always good.
General assistance, we haven't spent anything in general assistance, they're very, we're obligated to fund it, so I just left it as the same number, figured it was not gonna end up anything. Cemetery, cemetery, didn't really spend anything this year. Um, they have asked that they just get the budget repeated for less than we come back out necessarily. Uh, and their work in Kathy Hopkins is already laying the groundwork to try to get some things done next year with this department budget, the fellows that resubricate. Public safety, let's just say most of it's unchanged, but you got a thirteen percent increase. Uh, because the shelter contract increased. I don't think in my time here, the shelter contract has increased. And they finally called for an increase to two dollar fifty cents a capita, per capita, so that's gonna bring that contract price up to eighty one ninety five.
What is that?
That is what we have to pay by state law to, uh, humane society or animal shelter.
Oh.
Because it's a county. Shelter, because it's a county.
Uh, no, I mean, we could go to Waterville, we could go to Farmington, but we've tried to go with them and stay with them because they obviously can use the funding, and it's proximity. Uh, I believe at one point in time, we're at Waterville, and Waterville had issues with management. Well, maybe we're a while ago when I got here, and we pulled them up to Somerset because there were management concerns there. And then your hydrant usage, the relabeled hydrant usage, right?
Good job.
And so that is a ten percent increase approved by main, uh, public utilities commission. It's ten percent this year, and let's not have a surprise, it's ten percent again next year. Uh, I don't want to there was a communication on the manager's list search with email the other day, people saying, do towns really pay a lot of the time for that water and hydrants? And some people said, no, some people came back with some stupid numbers. And so they're going out to go get some more money to do a project, but small towns are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Water dollars.
For hydrants. Like three of one thousand dollars a month.
And, ah, yeah, no.
Uh, recreation, so this one's a, this is a bump up, this one's a forty percent net, uh, change. And that's forty one percent in tax, in, in expense, so their wages are relatively the same, they've added five hundred dollars for somebody, hopefully a young person. Not too young, that would come in and, and help line the fields, uh, your baseball softball season, so that's been added in. Uh, then you work your way down through, and you're gonna get to the facility maintenance and repair, which was always fifteen hundred, we only spent two hundred and thirty six dollars. We've invested in the drainage, and now they want to invest in the surface preventative, um. I think the vice chair of the committee is John Lynch, who might have some knowledge about it, um, but also was perceptive of, of conflict, and so went to a third party, Sportsfields, who's a previous vendor. Uh, with the town to say, hey, what would you recommend? And they provided us with this brief phase, if you will, proposal. Um, and that proposal would return maintenance packet uh, that they have been talking about, and that they can net up about sixty four hundred dollars a year. Uh, that's crop control fertilizer, another fertilizer, and a broadleaf crab grass control. Um, preventive is, is the discussion that they had there as well as in the field. But that's a difference on the facility maintenance and repair. Uh, the increase there.
Would that fix some of the issues that are on, like the softball field is awful, like it's, I mean, I, it's it grows more grass, I mean, would that eliminate, I mean?
So I'm not sure, I know we have a, a local contractor that does that for a while now. Um, when the time of the year is right, and then, I, I'm not sure beyond that. I know that they had discussion, we were loaned a piece of equipment for the Cal Ripken tournament. Uh, and you're gonna see an increase in their capital reserve request. When that time comes to review that, they want to start saving for like actual field machines that can help with the maintenance of that, the surface, I don't think. No. This is really just the turf itself. All right, and then the next one, it is, it was, I think, it was twenty five hundred dollars, so it's an extra toilet or an extra cleaning a week. Uh, they want to keep that constant, there's a lot of concerns about young kids and mostly females, and the use of that facility is gross. So they would like to keep that, the parks committee is gonna have the same ask for you. They want to ask for lighting as well. Um, for the soccer field for the month of October, experimental, yes, but also needed, there are safety concerns. They barely can get a game in because it gets dark so early. Uh, and so we're able to secure six lights, uh, for two thousand dollars, and that is in large part because going to rental, uh, is well over the day, what they have, if they're in a new area, we don't. So they referred me to kind of that rental, kind of that rental gives a discount. Um, and so it would be, they're gonna try five hundred a piece for the full month. And see where that goes.
That has a diesel?
Yeah.
And we're just gonna use?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, I just.
Hey, I mean, if there's, I'm glad it will kind of do like a trial one on that, see how it goes, but honestly, like. Here's, I'm glad it was kind of like a trial run on that, see how it goes, but honestly, like. My initial idea found out about this, I'm pretty excited because. I know like as a parent of kids in sports, there's nothing they get more excited for, whether it's softball, it's, you know, it's. So whatever it is to play underneath the lights, like it's a big deal for kids, like a huge deal. Um, and it's a huge, like, like, there's just something that's like. Exciting about it. And I think that like, it's, oh, that field's lit up, so I'm excited. So I know we're going to have, you know, like town people who don't even. Kids are great. It's like, wow, kicking a ball. Let's go see what the lights are all about. I think that long term, I think that could be an amazing investment for us. And I think that it could. Bring a lot of like more tournaments. I mean, those tournaments always do fantastic for us. Like we do, you know, incredibly well with that, so. I'm excited. I think like, I'm nervous about the expenditure of it long term, but honestly, I think that. What a cool thing that we can have in our town. Yeah.
Alright, so we thought the recommendation of that, the parks committee was asking for a hundred and sixty three percent increase in their budget. Uh, their, their budget was eleven thousand last year, it's twenty nine thousand this year, what they're asking for. Uh, an increase in property casualty, obviously I've asked for that. We've got additional assets, that probably is not even be enough. Right? Honestly, we've got a new building at the park. We're going to have a new building at Ashley Wing. We've got dock sections. We've got other dock that's going to be coming. We're going to have an experience rating issue there probably. Uh, but you know, we, we doubled it for life, fifty, fifty bucks. Internet, that's a new expense to us. Uh, the goal for the committee is to put internet at Usula Park and internet at Ashley Wing Park. Uh, and so that's the cost of it.
Well, we have that if we do those, um. We have to have internet, right?
No, that, that's running off.
Alright.
Uh, this is primarily for surveillance.
Yes, okay.
And then obviously we offered out as a, as a hotspot, that adds attraction. Uh, electricity, we doubled that because we've got a new building. We're going to have lights at Ashley Wing Park sometime soon, hopefully. Uh, and there'll be surveillance in the building and that'll be another increase next year. Facility maintenance and repair, they finally have things to repair, I think. And so that's. An ask just to say, okay, we've got a building. If something happens to the building or whatnot. We're going to fund out of that. The department equipment, they've asked for that to be increased, um. Tables, chairs, things like that. It all comes up and adds up. Downtown maintenance, that's flat. That largely just pays for some beautification stuff, saying bark mulch delivery, um. This or that, this line is actually going to be bumped up even more because we paid for the chain for Ashley Wing and those posts. Out of the park since I run this report last. Equipment rental. That was fifty six hundred dollars. That was for porta potties in years past. That paid for two porta potties, one regular and one handicap at. Usula Park. They would like to have. One handicap and two standard porta potties at Usula Park. For six months and that's what we have right now. The cost of that is fifty two twenty. To put three toilets, no handicap accessibility. At absolutely park for the twelve month period, assuming it's a year on trip. Is nine thousand three hundred and six.
Do we need three there? Is that, I mean, feels like a lot of porta potties. There's going to be lines there.
I have no clue. That's what we have for a little housing in our fruit stand. That's. What their request is for that, they, they talked about it in the little lab. He's like, I feel like we need to cut it back. But we can't. It's just going to get dirty and then it doesn't look good for the park.
Yeah.
They batted back and forth because she felt really guilty about the money and I'm like, hey, I like that already. Uh, so I have a note on my desk. I have a note on my desk. We need to come up with an alternative to porta potties. If that's going to be a home ground or, you know, a, a holding tank or whatever, I'm not sure.
I said before, I think we've e- explored the compost it with this price, composting toilets, like.
That's the point.
Hoops on the seat or something.
That's priceless.
It's still like Google cleaning companies, like.
Don't know how much it's going to use yet. That seems.
Because what is, what's the food stand slotted for? I gave the cap and two regulars. I think this is three regulars. It's a slot, it is a streamer.
Is it already heater built? Uh, is it, does it regular and the? Handicap, are those the same width? So how is it?
Oh, yeah, so that got me too, yeah.
Okay, but right now we're talking about. Wait, so do we have a fruit stand for Usula?
No, they won't. No, right.
Is this, is this what?
This is full.
From Usula, we're trying to get it. So like those were enclosed, but also because we wanted changing areas or something like that for. It was swimming.
We haven't talked about changing areas. Maybe you thought about it.
For all the parks, we're going to have three porta potties?
Three porta potties at Ashley Wing Park, three and three porta potties at Usula.
Six total. Right.
See Usula for six months. One at one seventy, I.
Maybe we're going to find some other deal with Ashley Wing for the winter time. Cause what I thought is thought it's not a stanky, so maybe it's, oh, that's. I don't know. I guess I'm just going to see how it goes for the years. We never even had this year. We don't know what the usage is going to be. It's better to have a budget there and not need it than. But do we have a fruit stand yet for Usula?
No, they won't. They've, they've got envy. They've got envy over the, they probably got envy over the fruit stand.
But are all things that really should be at Usula Park. It's, it's really a nice scheme of layout how they want it and it's made that out of that. And it probably should include some small changing thing that's just like the beach there that you can step into and place a gun. You know, sounds silly, but for the kids that come from over there and over there that walk there. But we do change right there, so.
I don't want to wait. I guess with the three and no fruit stand, but like till we really kind of nail the layout, could they like got in there with. Music and the swimming and the kayaking, like.
Right. This one to orchestrate to have laid out correctly.
Cause didn't they even move the shed or the boot trucks or something? You have it one way, one time.
So we're going to be, we're going to be adjusting the fence. We're going to be shifting that a little bit to the right in the next few years. Not in a sense, it's, I think it's something we can just manage ourselves to allow easier access into the park. And then you've got, yeah, you're going to have your entryway to an envelope. There's going to be a discussion about the gazebo down there. Do you want to redo that? And I think that their leaning towards. Have as a standalone article at town meeting. And just say, hey, do you want to spend, it's, it's. One of my friends funded the gazebo about great, which is really what they want. It's going to ramp. It's raised up. It's nice. Got lights underneath. The cost of that was like. Forty, forty five corint back when they built it. So it's fifty five or sixty. That really needs to be a direct community in the citizens. So anyway, but so they want that taken care of. They want it done. They want to enhance the area. They want it for the concept series. Um. Which frankly, this is going to come again. But. They don't want to build into this and they want it done probably sooner or later. And they just want to turn up and go and say, hey, do you think there's the highest level? We have a final this Saturday.
Yeah, I would love to see them do that. And then we just have to see how well used. I know the ones that's real park are having all three. Uh, and then the parking ride will have to see how much.
Right. I mean, candidly, it may be that we end up pulling one from Ashley Wing, putting it to the park because you've got your boat launch and you've got your playground. And now you go swim area and you've got kayaks.
Yeah.
Right.
Hatfield. For one from there, but Hatfield's got. Number of people there.
Yeah.
At any given time is in the hundreds and in this lot.
Right, so this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on one.
Do we get a discount for the amount of tools that we get?
Uh, hard no, and they don't even give me a discount. I get free toilet in Usula days.
And they're the only game in town, yes?
No, it's three.
They're number, one of the number two businesses.
We're looking at double. Anyway, really.
They're a municipal porta potty company.
Yeah, it's almost to that point, right? They also have developed. The Christmas time, right? Holiday list. The parks committee has submitted it, so we've got some stagnation. They also asked for establishment number is already helped.
Hmm, yeah, I think that, yeah.
Well, they're realizing that candidly, the public and the board is charging them with more. And it's not just just the park that's developed, it's not just two days. And so they're. Getting that, so on the code enforcement, this budget is down really the, uh, value of the benefits that were offered. Uh, as a part of the joint fire department, uh, fire chief code enforcement. Uh, I, we've got a little wage where it is from my perspective. I can't attract somebody who want to try and offer out. So I'm kind of stuck. I did get an inside line on, on a younger person that's certified code and certified plumbing that lives in the, not in town. In the area. Uh, and I put a call into him that, hey, why don't you meet with me? Um, hopefully something will come of that, but you know, it's something that we need. It's something that we need to be willing to invest in. We don't want to lose. Anyone around what we already have. I'm really good at it, but I'm not going to have time to do it come. February. Uh, your local philanthropy, we've got it up this time again, and so why not? We've been budgeting six and seven, uh. Penny always said, well, we're cheap. Should just be ten, should just be ten. So I could have hit ten. Uh, anyways, I just put it at the round ten. You can see what requests I've received already. The deadline to receive nonprofit requests is Friday. So you know, we're seeing it narrow up here. Uh, there's still is ballpark sixteen hundred dollars unexpended from this fund, um. For this year, so, uh, if you have an organization that you think could benefit from it that serves locally. Or not that you want to bring it, but you know, the voters allocated you money for philanthropy, local philanthropy. Uh, it's something that we could consider here at the last minute. Um.
Why don't you do this?
Did you want to?
Kind of, I don't. It's, I mean, I love it, but I.
It's double that, cause you're choosing, right? You're, you're deciding who shouldn't, should. Uh, and we don't have any formal process for this.
Yeah, it's really hard to make completely objective and not have any subjectivity, you know.
I don't, we did ads last year, the year before about explanations, uh. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. I, I, I like it. I, I like a lot of these organizations and even the ones I don't are, are certainly worthy of our money. Uh, it's just what they ask for and how they explain it to me and how it benefits the people right here. So as, uh. Touchy as this, I guess, you know, uh, yeah, I'm comfortable with it going to ten. I'm having the option to expend it more and it's certainly. There's organizations that need it, uh, right here, you know, so yeah, and we'll just see who puts in. For it, decide at that point in time who gets what through a due process. So you can give that some thought.
I'd rather just give everyone their money, little buckets out and say, put it where you want to put it, you know?
Well, right, we're just telling you, God, it'll be interesting to see who actually asks this year, what we have for our dollar month comes in and maybe it does come down to where we will give everyone they ask.
Well, we didn't even use it all.
So if you'd like to give somebody something, then we will, will add to the next agenda. So you just need to send an email and say, and we're going to just tag to think is worthy of. Be considered. Anyway, if not, it'll lapse into the general fund. Summer grounds, that's even on that contract that we already approved. That services sewer bond. There's the two loans. I broke it out in new style, crack to show people kind of where we're at. We've got two point four, two point six, seven left. Interest rate on that's less than two percent, so.
Okay, cause that was my next question. Cause I was curious about that.
Yes, it was less than two percent is what we are on that. One point. Well, this is the principal amount. The principal amount grows every year. The interest payment shrinks every year, which is just in benefit of the sewer users. But the taxpayers are responsible in this performance for the principal. Your unclassified amount, uh, has only changed with the estimate of main municipal dues, the increase there. Uh, they told me to estimate four percent. K B C O G has already been voted by the board to assess forty five, ten. Then I left the effort contributions left.
Uh, just to jump back to cemetery, is, yeah, do they have everything out of there to do the stone fixing? Yeah, that, that made to their list, so they're getting everything fixed.
And on their list, I actually am going to come on right now, probably like ten, all through the years. And I, I, unless I'm mistaken, but I, we're. It's been contractor issue.
Okay.
And you can get a contractor that'll come do it. We had a local contractor, so they would, they didn't. Uh, they have the money that there. I don't know. We took all of the proceeds from the cemetery to cross. The interest and we rolled that into a account. It looks like thirty five grand, right? So they have that in a reserve account. When you see reserve accounts, you need. Uh, they're not going to answer their contribution to it, but they have a reserve account. Okay. And then in future years, they could have. The reserve account, it's really a matter of, I think, amount from, you know, pocket to the people in the book. I'm, you know, some folks see it that way. So. Next meeting, we will have a full picture. If I don't get them from all boards and committees, then you're going to get my full picture and request them. That would really be. And it's going to be able to reach their final decision. So like on the first of January. Uh, I can get the budget committee in a row. We're going to hopefully break that up over two or three nights this year. Okay. If you have any questions, concerns about this stuff, let me know. If you could please leave your budget stuff in your mouth or, uh. It's like going back out to the next meeting if you can and.